So I wanted to thank you guys for joining us to our Youth Day Town Hall. And really, we just want to make sure that our students get heard. I'm Kelly, I'm sure you know by now, and I'm the program director for the African Construction Expo. And later this year, we were hoping to have our first student challenge. However, the event has been postponed to next year, as you can imagine. But don't worry, you are still in our pool of students who will participate next year. And I will definitely keep you updated. So when you see emails from me, don't send them to your spam folder. Please, please read them and I'll try and keep you up to date as possible. I think we've just got another student joining us. Morning. Hello, do you want to, is your, can you hear us? I think you're mute, I just unmuted you. Okay. So guys, so what I want to do is really just chat with you about some questions that I think it would be really great to, to sort of get our construction professionals and government to hear what our students have to say. Like we started the call, we spoke about some of the challenges we're facing, working in remote areas, connectivity. And we find ourselves relying so heavily on technology. That it's quite scary. And as you can see, something as simple as a Zoom call right now, we're struggling to hear each other, we're struggling to see each other clearly. I'm struggling to just learn how to unmute somebody. So there's a lot that's going on right now. And you know, we want to make sure that our students aren't forgotten. Next week being Youth Day on the 16th of June, we celebrate our youth as well and with that, our students. As you guys are the future of our both sector. And so very quickly, if I could ask you both to just, I know, I know you both very well and I know which universities you attend. But if you could just very quickly, just give your full name, your university and what you are studying. And what you hope to be after you study, you know, what do you want to be when you grow up? What sector are you hoping to go into? Just give me a little bit of an idea of where you at at the moment. And before lockdown, before the pandemic started, what were you hoping to achieve? Ben, do you want to, do you want to start off?
I can, I can start. Okay, my name is Ben Bifoko. I'm currently studying at the University of Johannesburg, second year, my second year, Lisa. I'm doing construction management and quantity surveying, Bachelor's of Construction Management and quantity surveying. For me, you know, I really wanted to become a quantity surveyor. So I went to the University of Johannesburg, hoping that I'll have a proper, you know, understanding and competency for me to become a quantity surveyor. You know, but you know, when you are like, I did my research and you know, found out the future of the field that I wanna, I wanna get into, right? So, you know, so I've been, I've been, I've been researching, you know, doing my own research. Obviously going to school, learning about quantity surveying, you know. So even though there was a question posed that is the future for quantity surveys, you know, that was the thing that was really, really giving me a problem, you know, but you know, I've learned that, you know, the problem that we have is, I think, I think it's still a universal thing that in construction sector, the education is still traditional, you know. We don't get into the technical part as much as we can, you know, because we really need technical training, first of all, and also the training in the technology that we're gonna be using in the future. You know, like, for example, in quantity surveying, we take off, you know. So when you take off, we're still doing the traditional way of taking off, you know. And while other, 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 abroad, other universities abroad are still, you know, are just from the get-go, they are implementing the technologies in their education, you know. So on my side, what I'm doing, I'm learning the technologies that I'm gonna have to use in the future. So that I can become competent, because it's very, very important, you know.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So that's me, I just wanna become a professional quantity surveyor in the next few years. You know, a competent one, one that will be competent in the future, you know, be able to use all programs. You know, and still be traditional as our construction industry is traditional.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you, Ben. Table, am I saying it correctly?
Table.
Okay.
Okay, I'm Table Guena, I'm originally from Pretoria, but I'm based in Cape Town. Studying at CPUT, doing some engineering, I'm a final year student. So for me, the pandemic just affected me by just one semester. I was supposed to be done now and working for Oricon Group, the consulting engineering company. But unfortunately, got delayed, so hopefully start in the next coming months, once I'm done writing my exams. Going forward in the future, what I would like to be, well, I would like to obviously become a PR, engineer, PR tech, and work towards becoming, let's say, a city engineer, where we're able to develop local governments, because a lot of rural areas are really struggling when it comes to infrastructure. We can see now at the schools, they don't have the right infrastructure, like the private schools where got the internet, the 4G, the 5G to get connected. So in rural areas, a lot of needs to be done. And also the low-income areas. So as a future municipal engineer or civil engineer, that's what I would like to do.
Excellent. Thank you, Table. And Asa, you've just joined us. Good morning.
Morning, Kelly.
How are you?
I'm fine, thanks, and how are you?
I'm well, thank you, I'm coping. And then we've got somebody else who's joined the call, but I'm not too certain of his name, as it's not showing up. Hello, at the bottom, how are you?
Good, thanks, and you?
Good, thank you. So what I was hoping you would do, as Ben and Table has just done, is if you could both just very quickly introduce yourselves, let us know which university you are part of. And of course, what you'd like to do after your studies, which, which sector you'd like to go in, obviously in the both sector. But which, you know, what field you'd like to work in as a professional? If you could just give us a little bit of a background. Asa, shall we start with you?
Yeah, it's okay. Okay, so my name is Asa Zeta. From Johannesburg, I'm studying construction management at the University of UJ. Ben, there's my friend. Okay, so with me, I would like to be a construction manager, because I have a bit of a background in the construction, the construction industry. So I was introduced to the construction industry by my dad. So, which is one of the reasons why I chose this course. I took interest in, in, in the process, like, and managing everything that has to be built and goes into infrastructure and all of those things. So basically, that's the reason why I chose construction management.
Excellent. Okay, and then, yeah, there we go, it's much better, we can see you clearly now, you've moved.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I remember that I'm not here anymore. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, go for it. Let's, let's hear what you're studying.
My name is Lazara Mamba. My name is Lazara Mamba, I'm studying finance technology, I'm studying engineering surveying. So basically, what I wanna do after my completion of studies, just to be a construction surveyor. Where I'll be, I'll be maybe setting out of construction, large construction works, project whereby setting out of the building platforms and planning of the construction. Which is more of just like lens surveying, the beginning of any construction work. You know, surveyors have to come and plan everything. Yeah, I just wanna be a construction surveyor.
Excellent. So I'm of course very proud that all of you are going into the construction sector. It's the world's oldest industry, so you can't go wrong, regardless of what you choose. So, but even so, as you, as you mentioned, Ben and Table, you know, the world is changing and so is the construction sector. And I want to find out from you, as students, what do you believe the future of the construction industry will look like? And how do you think you need to prepare? So let's look at the construction sector in 10 years' time, when you're all professionals, when you're all on the project sites. What do you believe it's going to look like? Table, you look like you're ready to answer.
Okay, from my side, I see us going into a very virtual world, because working for a company like Oricon, when we design, we design for people. So we use VR systems and drones. So that's the type of system that we're going into now. Where we actually have something called 7D boom technology. So it allows us to do not just only the designs, but also to manage projects from your home or your office. So your drone hovers around your construction site, takes quantities of it. That's where maybe Ben and various other guys might be losing their jobs. It hovers over the construction sites, takes the quantities, sends them back into the boom system and updates it for you. And when we design for our clients, what we do is we, let's say, create like a VR game and you're able to walk into your VR game that you've created. So if it's a road, you make your client drive using your PlayStation controller, Xbox, to actually feel how the road is. And if it's, let's say, it's a property, you actually create like a 4D room where a person can walk in, touch the door and actually feel how it feels to actually be inside the building. So going forward, on the design side of it, that's how it's going to be. On the construction side, that I can't really say much, but there's gonna be a huge difference where I think we're gonna actually also need a lot of technology and innovation happening. Like now, they're using GPS systems for your creators, which are like for leveling and making sure that everything is done. So it reduces the amount of work that one person needs to do. And it takes about, about 10 people's jobs at the same time, so. Because we're a country that is a third world country, still growing, so we still consider people first, so we're not gonna put technology first going forward. So that's the reason why we're always gonna make sure that the technology we use doesn't really hamper the amount of people on site. So, yeah, that's just my side.
Excellent.
Going forward, yeah.
Excellent. I think that, you know, just to add something on to what you've said. I think we do have to put technology, maybe not first, but we do have to put it forward. But you're right, I think, you know, we've, we've been able to adapt so much over the last few years. I mean, if you think of how the sector started and it's still going. So I think, I don't think Ben will be out of a job. I think that his job will change. And like he mentioned earlier, you know, I think that he, he will have new opportunities and efficient ways of doing it, but I don't think that, that he's going to be out of a job. So let's, let's not say. He looked very worried. Okay, great. So I don't know if anybody else wanted to add on to that question?
Yeah, can I add something?
Yes, of course.
I mean, like, let's just think about it, you know, on a quantity surveying perspective, right? I'm like, programs like your beam costing or estimating, programs like cost X, for example, right? Just imagine now, now, everyone is deficient in terms of those programs, right? I'm taking off. You see, people like Table can be able to take off and now one aspect of my job is lost there, right? So there is a high possibility, even though there are other, you know, aspects that we deal with, you know, in terms of contracting, looking at the contracts, you know, and so forth, there are other aspects that we deal with. But you know, each and everyone's job here is at stake, you know, you're surveying people, we can be having your, what do you say, I'm just thinking out of, you know, you can have, you can have your, what do you call these things? Okay, I forgot, you know, there was, ah, okay, I forgot, it's fine. So, okay, one thing I wanted to say in terms of the question, right? So the question was, what's?
What do you believe? Yeah, so what do you believe the future of construction, the industry will look like? And, and just how, more importantly, how do you need to prepare for it? How do you think as a student, they need to prepare you for, for what's to come?
Okay, cool. You know, I mean, like, if you look at the situation that you are in right now, you know. So from my perspective, it's a perspective of research and, you know, engaging with the lectures, you know. Looking at the situation that you are in right now, I think the constructions, the contracts, the construction sector is gonna be forced, you know, to really invest in technology. Why? Because of, if we check now, I think in the construction sites, they're trying by all means to think of ways to rehab a few number of people on site. Right? So if we have a few number of people on site, that means that hard labor, you know, gonna have to make a solution out of that, you know. Having to bring in like technologies that will reduce, you know, the hard labor, that will help a certain individual to carry a job easier, do you understand? So as, as a construction sector, as a construction sector, we've been, okay, in South Africa, you know, based on the research that I've done, you know, we were the last industry or sector to catch up with technology. We always behind, you know, we always behind. But situations like this forces us to innovate out of, you know, the traditional way of how we do things. You know, so as, as students, we should, I think, you know, we should start looking at technologies that are there or that are being implemented, like in big companies, like, you know, your Ericord, your Ercorn Africa, you know, your Akasize, for, for example, quantity surveying company, your Akasize company, you know, they, they're also looking into, you know, using cost X. Or I'm not sure, but I think they are already implementing it, do you understand? So it is the matter of us, you know, preparing ourselves to be competent. You know, let's not wait for us to get there and then we don't know how to use certain programs and we don't know how to implement certain programs. We're still traditional as before.
Absolutely.
Luckily keeping ourselves, even with the time that we have at home right now, you know, we should start looking at how these programs work. You know, we have more time now instead and we should start looking at those programs and stuff like that. Because, you know, some, some of us don't have like currently opportunities to be on site or to work with big companies. Your Black Panther here. So we should just start equipping ourselves at home with those programs.
Absolutely. And, and I also, you know, just, just to add, this, that was actually our major object, objective for getting you all at our events later this year. But it's still going to be a big priority for us for next year's student challenge. It's to get you engaged, engaging with professionals in the sector. To make sure you learn about the latest technologies and that you're aware of how things are changing and how companies are doing things. And is there anybody who wants to add? I must say again, I'm feeling very left out, being the only girl on this group. But, but nevertheless, there's, there's Kanubi, if I'm saying your name correctly.
Yeah, yeah, that's me, actually. I think like the team, the majority of the people, I'm not sure if I'm right, is the majority of the people are students. Okay, so in terms of construction, I'm sorry, I was in a meeting and then I left and then I came back, so.
That's okay.
Yeah, so I just wanted to add a little bit in terms of the future of construction. First of all, construction and everything in South Africa in terms of construction and design and so on, it's not like we are backward, like, as it has been said, like we're a deadwood country and we don't, kind of like, we are left behind. The problem is that the systems have already established, it's making it a bit, kind of like, people use the way things are being done. A simple example can be like, back in the days, drawing were done by hand. So you'd have to draw whatever you are building, right? And then you're gonna submit it to the municipalities. And that same drawing needs to be produced. If you worked in a structural engineering company and so on, you'll be aware, like, you're gonna have the same thing from the architect, you will have an electrical engineer, you will have a mechanical engineer drawing and so on. All those people, they have to collaborate. And most of the time, and construction is technically the boss and the most challenging part, because you feel like, okay, I've designed this part. And if you go to a contractor, they'll be telling you like, oh, the guys who are designing are not really competent enough. You know, there, there might be some, there are always challenges between different people. So along the run, they, they have been a raise of tools which has been created, it's like, like Autodesk developed, I don't know if you are aware of it. We moved from AutoCAD to Revit. Revit is creating 3D models of everything you are, you want to design, right? And it's giving information to that. So that feels like whatever you build is in a 3D model. And if, for example, there is an electrical engineer who will have to work, they will also have to create a 3D model. They can collaborate, you know. So the mechanical engineer, the architect, the structural, the, everyone who is involved in the project can have some sort of a model which represents what needs to be built. So that was, that happened almost, I can say perhaps 10 years, they created that solution. And later on, they start developing it, creating simulations, what can simulation in construction looks like. So all those software, they were coming and funny enough is like, there are some which are actually free for students. Any student can go there and Autodesk on all these softwares. They are charging, let's say, 40K, almost, I would say like 40K a year to use any of their softwares. But they give the student free access to it, you know, just to learn all the softwares. So you can go and learn all those things. And let's say you go to a company and then you say to them like, oh, okay, so you guys are doing design using, let's say, AutoCAD, because you will find, for example, people have already established, they've been there for 10 years doing AutoCAD drawings. And you'd be like, okay, let's, I've, let's say, watch a YouTube video, because I'm a student, I want to, you know, I want to share my knowledge and so. You, we can do drawing, let's say, in 3D and so on. And every time you bring that idea, there'll be people who will kind of like try to fight you back. It'll be like, we know this and your things. It's not like we fight you, but we just not yet comfortable with them, you know. But over the years, things have been developing, they're trying to make it as more comfortable as possible, so that people should, should spend less. Most of the mistakes happen between, in communication, when you're communicating. The architect might want something, the structural engineer might want something, but the thing is like, if you're having those drawings, everyone is having individual drawings on their own, they can't know, for example, where the mistakes are and so on. But technology is allowing those things to happen. And most of them, the majority in the industry, they are not just comfortable enough to be like, okay, we accept this. We wanna, we wanna give it a try. And the other thing goes is like, every, every technology that comes has some sort of flaw, it's not perfect, you know. Let's say, for example, like you're just a student and then you come in and then you want to share all the great ideas or whatever you learned on, and then you're gonna find like some of the software have bugs, you know. It's not like the people on top, they don't like you, but they prioritize safety first, you know. So this are those are the things that are going on. And as students, if you're a student or you just want to start, the only thing that may be like, you just need to look at the the opportunity, what people are doing. They'll say, for example, South Africa is 10 years back, so what does the UK is doing? What is Australia is doing? What is the Americans are doing? And you can learn what they are doing and see how it can apply. Of course, it's never gonna apply 100% in the South African ways, but see how it can apply. So that's a bit my contribution.
So to answer your question about how do you prepare for it? So how do you prepare for the future? You have to create platforms where people have access. Like for example, now during the pandemic, we have platforms where it's like webinars. People are able to see and chat to the engineers or architects or construction managers about the projects that are happening. So you stay up to date with what's the latest, because one thing we believe is that 10% is what the knowledge that you get from your qualification. 20% comes from networking and then the other 70% comes from experience. That's where a lot of the people mention that being on the construction sites. So it's through experiencing that we actually get to learn and actually see where we're going and prepare for the future.
The other thing is that we have all, we whole have this idea, like you need to be on site to, in order to learn how to do, you know, to fill the project and so on. But right now, people can simulate a project, they can simulate a site to see what exactly is going on. So I don't completely agree to the idea, like experience is only, you need to be on site in order to gain that experience. All the technology that comes in, they're trying to simulate as much as it can, what is the reality on site? For example, like if you get a survey, let's say, a lens surveyor, right? A lens surveyor will take, let's say, a point, if, I don't know, I don't know, perhaps if I'm being a bit more technical. Back in the days, or back in the days, if, for example, there is, let's say, a road being built or there is a site, most of this, the, what they were doing is like, they're gonna collect points where there is a point where there is changes and so on. And that, they will create a model and they will send it to people and it needs to be interpreted. But currently, we have, let's say, Google have, Google have give you an idea, you can see the site on Google Earth to see how it's gonna look like. And they can also slightly give you, let's say, the elevation of how the site is, the existing slope of the site. And on another level, they have drones, drones which can decide, decide to see what exactly it looks, what is the elevation of every single point. Actually, it goes to the point where it's not only taking a single point, but it's taking a pixel, every pixel on a picture of a drone can be attributed to the elevation. So you can, it's, it's possible to kind of like digitize the, the, kind of like the site and trying to work on it. So perhaps one thing like people need to do is that you need to educate everyone who is involved on site to see how they can prepare, perhaps a transition between consulting and construction, so see like how those people who work in a construction industry can also understand what people are working in the design, like in design and so on, just something in between. Where you can see exactly what is on site and what you're designing. So you can still again experience, even if you, you're not on site, you know. But as long as you kind of, as long as you kind of like understand what's going on, if you understand, perhaps knowing just a little bit of software and I can tell you, there is a lot of knowledge. Perhaps knowing just a little bit of software and I can tell you, there is a lot of knowledge online. Which are teaching you what to know and so on, perhaps what we need just to re-educate ourselves somehow.
Okay, I think, I mean, this, this does seem, and I, I, I think you mentioned the word drone, and I think that's what Ben was trying to get at earlier. Um, I just wanna get, our friend is getting very excited to comment on what you had to say, and he's raised his head. So I just wanna give him an opportunity to, to give his points across before we introduce our students who's just come onto the call.
Okay. Uh, I wanna go with the, the construction industry, like. In the, the, we approach into the fire. So what's, what's really important now for the future of the construction is that therefore I still. Look, look aside and see we will take, can we bring to cracking industry, we can make way. More, uh, one, one. Now, in the first, say.
Keep your microphone, keep your microphone still, so you're just, you're just struggling to hear you a little bit, so just keep it really still and then it should be fine. Try, try to move it just a little bit more. Give it a taste. Give it another taste.
I'm there. Sorry.
Okay, there we go, I think that's.
Excuse me?
That's perfect, go for it.
Okay, okay. The aim is to make the, the, the way to, to be fast and efficient and to. There to be. Some project which lasts for five years. The one. Which the construction project can last and the amount of people.
So the sound, the sound is, is.
We, we have leveling.
I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to just, just interrupt you for a moment, because the sound is really, really bad. But what I did somehow managed to get from, from what you said. Um, was about efficiency and, and bringing and making sure that the construction, the project site is efficient. By bringing in such, such technologies. And what I'm gonna ask you to do, just so that we make sure that we have understood you clearly. And that we don't rely too much on the sound, is if you could just put a message in the chat. And, and I'll read it out, so just put your comments in the chat if I, if I haven't. I, I, I didn't hear everything and I, I do want you to get your points across. So if you could just put, type your message in the Zoom, the chat, and then I'm gonna read it out for you, if that's, if that's okay. Is, is that okay? All, all right.
So prepare for the, what we, we can use to prepare for, for.
I'm just, I'm just gonna ask you once more, just, just to put that, what you've said now. Cause I think it's really important that we, that we hear you really clearly and we understand clearly. Is for you just to, to, to sum up what you've spoken about now and to put it in the chat. Um, just so that we able, cause the sound is, is not very clear, is, is that okay? And then I'm just gonna give Asa a chance to give his points across while, while you type that message to us, will that be okay? Okay, thank you so much. Asa, do you wanna, do you wanna go first?
Yes, um, going back to your question of where construction is going in the future. You, you mentioned something about, uh, construction being always there, cause we're always building and all of those things. But then, uh, another factor that we need to look at is that as much as construction will always be there. Uh, 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 like the F that we're building in. Like it won't always accommodate more buildings. Oh, so I think, uh, uh, what, what probably what the construction industry should be looking at is, is going into more. Building more greener buildings, uh, 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 more greener, sustainable buildings where. Where as much as we cover more land, we, 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 we cutting down trees and covering more land. The buildings that we're building, they also, uh, 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 can also, can also. Can also simulate or do what, uh, 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 the trees that were in that original era can do as well. So we need to look at, like, learn from cities like, uh, your Singapore where. They, 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 they looking into more greener buildings where you see like most of the buildings, they surrounded by, by, by plants and all of those things. So as much as they're cutting down trees, uh, 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 those, those greener buildings, uh, can be able to, 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 to simulate. Whatever those trees can be doing, cause, uh, if we, as much as we'll always be there, the ecosystem won't always be there. As much as, 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 as we're looking at it, so we need to take care of that as a construction industry as well. Yeah, that's all.
Okay, brilliant. I, I don't want to keep you guys too long, so I just wanna go answer this very important question. Um, you guys may not think, think this, but I consider myself a youth, okay? And I wanna find out from you, you know, what is significant, uh, for this year's Youth Day? You know, twenty twenty Youth Day is like no other. You know, last year, this time, we were maybe celebrating, we were looking forward to not only a public holiday. But remembering why South Africans celebrate Youth Day. Um, and, and with that, so I just, I wanna hear from each of you, you know, why is this year significant to you? All of you are sitting at home, um, you know, so, so it's, it's clear that it's very different this year. But I also wanna hear from you, you know, as our future professionals in the construction sector. You know, what are some of the great ways that, that our students or our universities are maybe innovating? Um, and coming up with really great ideas to, to protect our students, um, when we go back to university. Um, so you know, with challenges come opportunities, what are some of the opportunities that you found during lockdown, during this pandemic? Um, any interesting sort of, um, inventions, or like I say, innovations that have come up? So if I could start off with, uh, let's see, Ben, you haven't had a chance to talk. Let's hear from you.
Yes, thank you. So to be honest, uh, this year's, uh, Youth Day is gonna be quite interesting, you know. From a lot of perspective, from a lot of things that has happened throughout the year, you know. So, you know, youth has been, uh, people that are always, you know, radical. In terms of changing, you know, ways of, of living, ways of behaving, you know. They're shaping our future, so first of all, uh, from the pandemic, uh, right now. So what, what we're looking at is how, how can we think, rethink our, our, our future jobs? You know, like in terms of how we seeing our fathers, our mothers being retrenched. You know, how we see a lot of our elders not going to work anymore because of this pandemic, you know. Because of, you know, somehow, it's, it's a matter of, 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 uh, qualification. In terms of competency, who to stop, who to make, uh, priority in terms of their, the labor force and stuff like that. And you find like, you know, especially in our black communities, you know, we. We, we, we experiencing a lot of, you know, uh, breadwinner staying at home now and their salaries being cut. You know, so we need to rethink in terms of how we look at working for a salary, for example. Just for example, you know, we need to rethink in terms of our, our streams of income, how do we cover that? How do we become better if something like this will hit us when we are at the working class, you know, as a youth? And also, if you look at, uh, you know, what has happened in America, we have to highlight that also, you know. It's gonna be significant in terms of what do you wanna be celebrating, you know, it's gonna be like, you know, our consciousness in terms of, uh. Black, uh, 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 individuals or African individuals, you know. And everyone that relates in terms of us living in one environment, you know, and. Helping each other and having a space whereby we can actually live without any violence, you know. So we have to reflect on that also and grow, you know, in terms of making our country as a better society. You know, we need to learn of other international news that has happened, you know, so we wanna be celebrating quite a lot. You know, and reflecting on what are the peoples in terms of the two sixteen, what happened, what are the peoples of that, you know. So, yes, in terms of that, so, uh, when we're looking at, uh, 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 the inventions, uh, you know. So to be honest, uh, uh, I'm not, I'm not quite aware of any invention that I got. You know, but like I said, like I said, it's, it's, it's about investing for myself. I'm investing in terms of, you know, how can I make, uh, my skills better? You know, especially, you know, in a technological perspective in construction, you know. So, yeah, like what you said, the, the thing, the, the true, that's what I forgot, like, it was, I couldn't even remember it. But that was just saying in terms of how will constructing change, you know. My perspective is you look at, uh, Ameri-, um, you look at overseas, or you look at like your America. Your England, UK, everywhere, you look at international companies, what they doing. And try and bring it home in a way that you look at companies that are trying to align themselves with the, uh, international, uh. Competency, you know, and then if you are that kind of person, you know, that really want to relevant, stay relevant for the longest time. You have to look at the companies in our country that are aligning themselves with those international. And then go with them and try by owning to engage with them, you know, and be part of them. So, yeah, that's, that's my side in terms of.
Absolutely.
Just have to, uh, yeah, in terms of innovations, I'm just looking at my skills and stuff like that, I haven't had any invention so far, yes.
Absolutely, so I, I do agree with you that we are all trying to survive, um, right now. You know, we, all our families are greatly affected by this, and I don't think there's a family that isn't. Um, or there's a community that isn't.
Yeah.
Um, and I do think, like you say, there have been very big happenings, such as, um, you know. The case with, with what happened in America. Um, and, and what's still happening and, and how we've got to think about Youth Day from, from. You know, for the very reason that we celebrate it and then that we celebrate our youth. So I do think that you've raised some really important points there. Um, I want to just try to give, um, let's see, who would like to go next? I don't wanna be like a teacher and select somebody, who would like to go next? Table, do you wanna go next before your internet cuts off again?
Uh, no, okay, I don't mind going, um, so just to add on to what Ben has said. I do agree that it's very important that we actually embrace, uh, June sixteen for what it is. Because normally we'd always celebrate and go out and have a good time. But since now it's like COVID nineteen, it's a bit different, we all indoors. It's given us enough time to actually reflect on a lot of stuff. Um, and let's say from the education side of it, boss, if you. Uh, we kind of behind in terms of technology, even though a university of technology. So there's opened up a lot of opportunities there and actually showing our executives or management that. There's a lot that needs to be changed, there's new technology that needs to be developed. And there's certain gaps that need to be filled there in order for us to get better education, you know. And, um, going back to the part about June sixteen and being youth. It's about time we actually reflect and sit down and, and always just look at, uh, people like Steve Jobs and. Uh, people like Bull Gates and stuff. We actually have our own local, uh, successful people who actually also grew up in the township. For example, I'm reading a book, uh, by Bonamwahale lift as you rise. He's actually one of the CEOs in South, South Africa, he's the CEO of Bitvest right now, he's the CEO of BLSA. Uh, also, uh, betting on a deck here, it's also another book written by an engineer himself. And he also grew up in the township in East Cape, so. I think it's a good thing that we're actually going through this crisis, that it gives us the chance to actually sit down and. Actually read about our history and going forward so that we can create a South Africa with lots of. Uh, good leaders, like as Bonamwahale has mentioned in his book that. The only way to, uh, make South Africa better is through business. And if you could create leaders who understand that our state-owned companies, like your SCOMs. And employ a lot of engineers and construction managers, county surveyors, SAA, SANRO. These are all national assets and these could be used to develop our infrastructure, which is a very important asset. And we are able to even get more investments, which will develop our country as one. And we can actually go forward and actually still become a good South Africa that we are. So that's my little, uh, takeaway from the June sixteen for twenty twenty and going forward. Instead of us always just having concerts and having our favorite DJs and artists. You know, but it's just to kind of reflect back and actually see where we're going as a future leaders of South Africa. Thank you.
And I, thank you, and I do, I do agree, we've got so many excellent South African leaders that we can look up to. Um, you know, we are inclined to always look abroad, we are inclined to always look at international, um, you know, professionals. Um, and, and what they have to say, but we've got our own South African, um, great leaders. You know, we've got a great president who's really looking after us right now. Um, so I do, I do really agree with, with what you had to say. Um, okay, is there anybody who would like to, to comment on Youth Day, and anybody else who has? Shall we try the sound? Shall we try the sound? Okay, Asa, I'll, I'll come to you right now. Let's just try the sound, let's see if it's any better, um, do you wanna, do you wanna check it out? Oh, no, no. Try the chat. I know, I know you didn't, you didn't put your message in before, but do you know where the chat is? If you just look at the bottom of the screen, you'll see where it's got mute, stop video. There's also a, um, an icon for chat. If you just click on that, you'll be able to just type out your message and then I'll read it out for you. Have you found it? Just give me a thumbs up if you, if you found it.
Can you hear?
Oh, there we go. That seems to be better. Okay. Do you wanna just give it another, one more test? Let's try once more. I think he's found the chat. No? Okay, I think, I think he's, he's, the, the video, the, um, connection is slightly delayed on his side. So I'm not sure if he's, but let's, let's try the chat again. Just find the chat icon. Um, type your message out and we'll, we'll make sure that, that we, we get to that comment because I don't wanna leave you out because I know that you've got some interesting things to say. Um, yeah.
But he actually switches off his video, but he keeps his audio on.
You can try that as well. Yes, let's try that. I'll actually just put your video off from my end. Okay. Well, somebody's outside. Uh, okay, do you wanna give it one more try? I'm not sure if you can hear us now or if you can.
Yeah, I can hear you well now.
Ah, there we go.
I can hear you much better.
The youth of today know what's, what to do on Zoom. Okay, tell us.
I think, I think, yeah, I think it's my network. I think it's my network.
That's okay. Don't worry. So let us know. You have quite a bit to say. Yep.
Um, we own the youth month, yeah. Yeah, there. Yeah, about, about the youth month of this year, I think in the case of this pandemic, uh, most of the youth are thinking out of, out of the box. Most of you are trying to think how are they gonna survive or make a living or live through this pandemic? Everyone is, is out there trying to make sure that they learn how to be with it. Like now, as students, we need to get used to online learning. So most of the youth are, are, I, I actually like ready to say, okay, I think this is new world. We need to adapt to this new, new world we're gonna live, we're gonna cause. Like now, they, 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 they looking at, at outside of the, of the world. People are, there, there's a lot of innovation is going on. There's, everything is done online. Now we have a meeting online. So most of the youth now, I, I think, youth of this year, I think this pandemic just came in during the, in the right time for the youth to say, okay, now is our time to make a significant contribution to the world. Now is the right time for us to think out of the box and survive through this type, this type of the situation we in. So like, what, what, I think what is more important about it is that we, we getting to see how, how our voices are important, how our, our contributions are important. We are, we, we working with universities to make sure that how can we learn? How can we get to have an exam or how can we get to have a, a, a test online? So I think every youth now is just in, 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 in a process of saying, okay, I think I'm more important to, to, to contribute more to the world. Like now, the innovation which has been going on for COVID ninety, the innovation of creation of masks, the innovation of creation of a way of washing hands without touching the water tank. So if you can do that, it's, it's the youth, it's the youth who are trying to come up with all those ideas. So it's like they, they sitting there looking at the, the, the things, like we gave, we gave trying to make sure that they, 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 there's a vaccine which is coming up, working with the health professional. They, they looking at those type of things. They say, okay, we're not just youth, but we, we, we also, we can also be professional in our age. We can also do something. It doesn't need you to say, okay, you have to be at a level stage of age or something. We can also contribute to, to the world more, more as we can. It doesn't need to think. I think this, this year is, that was important is that the youth are more awake. They, they tried, they, they, they looking at the world and seeing that they can contribute more to the, to the world. They can, there's a lot of things they can do and I think they are ready for that, especially in South Africa. If you can look in South Africa, like now, they, 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 the school will open. Most of the people who are, are, are in school are young people, are grade twelve, are grade eleven and their brothers, sisters, which are university students are home. So they, they are there learning how to live with this, in this pandemic and make sure they're learning a lot of things like health and safety. The health and safety things are, are most of the things which are not being taught in school. You get to get introduced them when you go to the workplace. But now it's, it's an opportunity for them to get to know, to learn the health and safety in any way. Work field, health and safety in any, in, in any places they are. Unlike just saying, okay, we're going to school just to learn about mathematics. We're going to school just to learn about becomes, but now they, what, what importance that they're learning things like how to take, how to, 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 to make sure that they, they live through the virus, they live with the virus and they evolve with it, they grow with it. So I think that's what is important for the youth month of anything.
A hundred percent. I'm so glad that Table was able to tell us, um, about your video so that we could hear what you had to say. And adapting is absolutely, adapting is absolutely, uh, the way forward right now. Um, being resilient, um, and, and I think that's, that's really our theme even for, for our, our event. Um, Asa, you were getting quite excited to make a point earlier. I wanna just give you a chance to tell, to tell us what this year is going to mean for you.
Yeah, uh, all, all said quite a lot, but I'm just going to add in terms of what Table and all said. So, uh, in terms of, uh, uh, as much as this pandemic is bad, it has its own benefits as well, like Table said. Uh, I think in terms of our, our, our education system as, as, as varsity students, it has changed a lot. So, uh, before the pandemic, we would go to class and then listen to the lectures speak and then just study the slides, copy and paste into the exam. But now everything is, is more of, uh, uh, since we can't write more tests, we need more assignments, which is what the teachers have been doing. So in terms of assignments, they're more research-based. So you're always on the internet learning new things, you're not taking just from the slides or the textbook and then just applying those things just to, to, to get a, a high mark. Uh, so what, what, what this pandemic has, 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 has really taught me is that, uh, if you do enough research and, 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 and all of those things, you, 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 you get to learn more uh, uh, outside of, 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 of the, uh, the course that you're doing. Uh, in terms of right now, uh, a lot of people are not, are not, are not at work because of this social distancing and all of those things. So what the best thing to do now is to look into like, how can you make a living while sitting at home? Like using the internet, using the internet for all of those things. So as much as it, it's, it's, it's bad, it has its own benefits as well in terms of research and gaining more knowledge and learning other things.
Absolutely. And, and I think I remember when I was a student studying, you know, for an exam, you, you study, you study, study to get all this information in your head and, and you hope you remember it for the exam. And then two days later, I couldn't remember anything that I studied. Um, so I almost used to wonder like, what was the point of being tested? Because, you know, I, I, I couldn't remember and I, I threw the textbook away or I, you know, stored it away, gave it away, sold it. Um, so I agree that, that practical, um, you know, uh, portfolios are sometimes so much more beneficial because you remember more because you're reading and you're going into it and it, you actually find yourself getting, getting really into it, you know? You find it interesting and more enjoyable. It is easier to study, write and then go. But I think this way we will become and you'll become better professionals knowing very well, um, about the practical side of things. Uh, Kanungi, you've been so quiet on your couch. Don't forget to unmute, eh?
Okay, I've listened to all the guys who have, well, say, they've raised great, uh, great points. And, uh, so, oh, I'll comment in terms of youth. Uh, I like, uh, someone who's, who's also reading. I love reading and I also want to give a chance to show my book. It's called, uh, The Laws of Human Nature by Robert Green. So the reason I'm talking about this book is because there was a, there was a chapter which says, uh, like there is always a fight between generations. There will always be a fight between, uh, we are in the probably when millennials, all of us, and then the generation X and, uh, baby boomer and so on. I don't know if you have heard of, Americans usually like referring to their generations like that. And one of the reasons, one of the, the, the point I got from this book was that every generation always think like the other one is dumb somehow. So older people assume like younger people are naive and so on and so on. And, uh, this is usually the fight between, I don't know, you always gonna complain with other people, like other generations. And on my side, I always assume like I'm a very open-minded person, you know? I never gonna be complaining about younger people until I start seeing TikTok videos and then I'm like, what?
Exactly. Ace is having his way. He's probably on TikTok.
Yeah, and I'm like, I never gonna download TikTok. But it's not true, like every generation always will have something to complain about it.
Right.
So right now, I'm like, okay, how can I be more open-minded? And the reason I'm saying that is because when I was, uh, I started, um, the, the transition from being a student to going to the workplace, I always, so it's, it's came to me like two ways. Do I have to kind of like humble myself so hard, like I will have to follow by later everything that will be taught in the industry? Or would I have to come up and say like, you know what, guys, I'm the younger, I'm the young person, you know, I know stuff and I know whatever, whatever. Yeah. So I kind of like went in both, like both sides. Coming out of a company, oh guys, I watch YouTube. I've watched the software. Guys, use this software. And so it's gonna make things easier and easier, you know? And at the same time, you're trying to be disruptive because sometimes you always assume like, we know, like there is this thing about, we know better, whatever, whatever. And when you go to the workplace, you realize like things are not as easy as it is. What you did teach you at school is not as practical as it is when you're on site. And there are a lot of things that comes into place. There was communications. I can tell like communication is the one thing which everyone emphasized. You need to communicate better. You need to put yourself into other, get a person shoes as much as you can, you know? So all those things come into, into place. And sometimes most of the young people, what they do, and I guess also one thing I have done is like, oh, I don't know much, so let me just follow what my, my managers and so on will tell me. And that can also bring you to be extremely passive. So in short, you start kind of like being passive. You want to follow and then you've kind of like forget about innovations. So as young people, it become, it's really important to have this balance to be like, okay, you are young, you're at the university and so on, your brain is open. So you have this potential. The same way like the, the, the other guy mentioned, like he's doing research about how to do all those things. It's not usually the case when you go to the industry where you will do research. So you need to keep your mind, the mind that you have at the university of you being not sure of everything, questioning things, you need to go with that mind in the industry. And to be like, okay, let me do research first, but at the same time be humble enough to be like, okay, I've done my, a part of my research, but, um, I need to understand those people because they have experienced, they've gone through these things, you know? Because, for example, it might be because the consequences of making a mistake into one project, it can be so, you know, such a problem, it can cause lawsuit and so on. And most of those things, they don't talk about it in the university. Like if, for example, you make a design and something goes wrong about that design, it can backfire extremely hard, you know?
Yeah.
So as young people, we need to be like innovative, you know? Like have all this fire but trying to make that change, but at, at the same time trying to listen to older people, you know? They have, whatever the reason why they are acting, the way they do is not because they don't like us or whatever, but trying to put ourselves into our shoes. But at the same time, we're also communicating to the older generation to be like, what does, how they can act, they can understand us. Things like, uh, small things, uh, like when you go to, let's say, uh, all the engineers, all the seniors, those who are living. I remember when I was doing my training, I made this old engineer, he was not taking, he was not an engineer. Because I think like if you, in the industry, there are always people in today seventies, seventies, eighties. Back in the days, perhaps it was difficult to be at the university, then my work on site and become just a contractor and so on. But again, a vast know, knowledge of experience. So I remember asking that guys like, hey, do you have, I, I, I'm pretty sure you have done a lot of projects. Do you have, um, have you written anything about it? You know? Do you have anything that I, I, I know like you have a lot of experience? And if, if any facts, like I'm not gonna tell the company which I was there, we're putting retaining walls, gamions. We're putting gamions on the retaining wall close to a river and all the guys with that, we keep on working on it until that old guy, that old engineer came and they'd be like, you know what? I'm telling all the gamions that you're putting um, along the river. If it rains, it's gonna take them out. Everything will be washed away, absolutely. And it was gamions like one meters, one cubes, one meter cubes of gamions, like rocks. The way that we worked on it, even when that guy was mentioning about these things will be washed away if it rains. And in my mind, I was like, perhaps it's exaggerating. And funny fact, a week later, it rained and all the gamions were washed away. So the expenses, everything was gone. But I think it's like those guys have experience, but they have no way of sharing. For example, you can go as a young engineer, be like, why don't you create the YouTube video to those guys? You know, those old engineers, be like, okay, can you share into that way? So this is perhaps where like we can try and to, uh, to share information. And, um, the other thing also I found out is like, you're never gonna succeed on your own. If you read, most of the time is like, if you look at all those innovators, let's say Elon Musk who keep on like building stuff.
Is he South African? Is he?
It, it, it's so unbelievable, you know, you, you know? Sometimes I question myself. I look at my calendar, you know, it's so blank. And then I'm like, I wonder how is Elon Musk's calendar is? It's kind of like last week, no, it's so crazy. Sounds like last week he announced about the track. Now there is sending people in the moon and now talking about Starlink, you know, all those stuff. But, but the, 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 the way like the media is covering all those things, you know, we, we hear about Elon Musk. Elon Musk has done this, Elon Musk. But the truth behind this like is not the only one involved. It's the great team behind it. But most of the people, when, as young people, usually people are like, you know what? I wanna be like Bill Gates. I wanna be like Elon Musk. I wanna be whatever. But the truth is like those people never act on their own. And this is really, and then we go into the industry and then we assume like, okay, I need to succeed on my own. So whatever knowledge that you can collect, whatever, just, just share it. Because we, we need to be able to share. That's the reason, like if you find, for example, a old person who is in his eighties and so on, is an engineer, push him to, to be on YouTube. You know, tell him like, okay, share whatever, share no matter, even if it's not clear, just talk. You know, we never know ten years from now, a young engineer can go online, they can read, they can watch those YouTube. You know, and a funny fact also is that a couple of weeks back, I just found out like the, the YouTube channel with the most, uh, which has the highest subscribers in two thousand and six was from an older guy who was a, this, a old veteran. Just an old guy was sharing that story about World War and so on. And back in the days before, you know, before the TikTok and so on, people wanted to listen to grandpas, how they experience and so on. So just encourage people like. But anyway, but I, 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 I actually, I've got, I've got, I've got against TikTok. I just like making fun of it.
Of course.
But all I'm just saying is like, we need, we, we need to, to bring this idea, like, we need to be humble. First of all, as young people, be humble, listen to people and trying to communicate better. And whatever you're learning into, share with people, you know, there is no such a thing like holding it for yourself. There are people have all that. There are people who have all that information as engineers and so on, and they might be in the eighties and so on, with absolutely no one to share that information. So we should share as much as we can, talk to people and so on and be, uh, no, we need just to make to ensure that we don't succeed alone, people don't succeed alone, you know? And let's share, and South Africa, personally, I'm not, I'm not South African, I'm Congolese. But I've been here for the past almost 10 years, you know? And the rest of Africa look after South Africa to be like, if South Africa is succeeding, there are chances like the rest of Africa can, you know? So there is, the youth of South Africa technically have influenced the rest of Africa in some way, in, in a way, you know? So yeah, that's my message.
Great. And I, I totally agree with, with your points on, on, we never, we can never stop learning and that we can learn from each other, working as a team. And, and I agree that that's, that's also why we, you know, we look forward to, to events like the African Construction Expo so that we can hear from people who have been in the industry, been there, done that, you know? They can teach you a thing or two and even though as, as youth, and yes, I'm putting myself in that category again, even as youth, we want to ensure that, you know, we can come on the site, so we can make, we can come up with great ideas, you know, we know better, we've just come out of school. Um, but I think it's, it's working as a team and, and also with that, I don't think that we should lose that creative mind of ours, you know? As students, we always have this ambition to change things when we start working, so um, I agree. And I'm excited that um, all of you are going to be the people of our construction industry. Um, great ideas, great points, and you've got really, really good drive. And I'm, I'm really excited to work with you for the, for the student challenge. Um, I know it's only gonna be next year, but it's, it's, it's really gonna be, um, I think, you know, in the right time and you have enough time to put your thinking caps on because you will be, um, have a chance to innovate. Um, so I wanna thank you guys so much and I must say, I really enjoyed being on um, a group chat with, with all the men in the construction um field. Um, I hope that there is still going to be an opportunity for women as well. But I, yeah, I, I hope you enjoyed the, the chat, we will do this again soon, hopefully in the, in the, in the coming months. I think it's really good to just check in, to hear what our youth has to say and to share it with, with our um, our stakeholders, with, with our, um, you know, event attendees and so forth. Um, so I just wanna thank you. So I don't know if you have, I think Mr. O has vanished, I don't know where he's gone to. But I want to thank all of you so much and I don't know if you have any closing remarks. Um, but I will share this with you as well so that you, you know, you, you can just uh, hear again what, what your, your fellow students had to say.